Will the board members who are present please respond? Ms. Door?
Here.
Mr. Young?
Here.
Mrs. Burke?
Here.
Mrs. Page?
Here.
Ms. Owen?
Owen?
Yes? You have a call, Madam Chair. Have your other board members called in? Okay, so it's the first order of additions then to approve the participation in some of those. Do I have a motion?
Yes.
Second.
And do you know which board members you're approving to participate via phone? Ms. Barlow and Ms. Gibson. They're on the phone? They are both on the phone. Okay. Is that, was that Dr. Sapini? Is there someone else there?
Me, Patrick.
Oh, okay. And Dr. Sapini. Okay, and the motion was made by Mr. Young and seconded by Ms. Burke. Ms. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Young? Mrs. Page?
Here.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right. Okay. The next item is your Pledge of Allegiance and Moment of Silence. Okay. All right. Ms. Lilly is also on the line.
Yes, I need to, can people hear me? I don't know.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, for the recorders, board members who are calling in, you can state the reasons and where they're calling from.
Okay. All right, well, we'll go do that and then we'll come back to this. All right, so Ms. Gibson, where are you calling from and what is the reason for your absence?
I'm absent, I'm at home staying secluded due to the coronavirus and I am at home.
Okay. Ms. Barlow?
I am also at home and with family in Georgia, staying secluded from the coronavirus.
Okay. Dr. Sapini?
I'm here with four children, staying with the coronavirus.
So you're at home?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you all. All right, now let us pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For those of you on the phone who may not have heard my request, the request is that you all keep your phones or computers on mute until you want to be recognized to prevent background noise. Thank you. All right, moving on for the adoption of the agenda.
Madam Chair, I do have two amendments. One is to announce the REB winners, and that would be 1.03. And the other is to authorize Ms. Hudasko to sign briefly in place of Mr. Simmons, and that would be 2.03.
Okay.
Linda?
Yes?
This is Kenya. I would like to amend the agenda to have an item, an item specific to discussing the budget both for the current 2019-2020 school year and the 2020-2021 school year.
Mr. Kamras, did you want to address that?
I'm certainly glad to provide any updates that I have. I don't have a great deal of detail to offer this evening beyond the budget transfers. I have already shared with the board around the current fiscal year and just some high-level information about FY '21, but that was going to be part of my overview as it is, but of course, glad to entertain and answer any and all questions that I can and get follow-up information for those that I cannot. So I'm agnostic if you want me to do that as part of my general update or if you want to have a separate agenda item.
All right. Ms. Gibson, are you okay with having that be part of Mr. Kamras' overview? Or did you want to have an additional agenda item?
I think it's important to have a specific agenda item. I also wanted to note, I was not able to hear anything that Mr. Kamras said.
Okay. Hang on. All right, Mr. Kamras, you have to press that button.
I did. I just don't know if...
Can you hear him now? Say something.
Hello? Can you hear me?
It's, it's very echoey and somewhat faint.
Well...
I mean, I can try to talk louder. I don't know if that helps. I think it might be the connection with the phone.
You may want to ask Mr. Barlow, Dr. Sapini, but I'm not really able to hear what he's saying.
I'm finding it similarly challenging.
All right, we are... I'm not sure, we have a wonderful tech man looking into it, but I'm not sure what we can do else. Ms. Door?
Might I suggest that when members of the administration or anyone is speaking, they come up, they switch spots with you or Cheryl and talk into the phone?
Linda?
Yes?
I can hear you fine, but I can't hear him.
Okay. All right, so Ms. Page?
Madam Chair, for clarity, so this meeting is especially to discuss school-related issues related to the coronavirus pandemic, the issues that we, emergency matters.
No, there are other things also on the agenda.
I get that, but that's related to the virus because of these extenuating circumstances.
Can you hear...
So I would suggest that, I mean, board members have additional items outside of what's already listed on the agenda if they can forward that information to you to share with the superintendent, to provide the entire board an update, to give the administration the proper time to prepare for a response.
Can you hear Ms. Page? Ms. Gibson? No.
Ms. Owen? Ali shared that if everybody on the phone, so Linda, you'll have to relay this, turns off the sound on their phone and listens to the meeting from our Facebook livestream, that is connected to each of our microphones, so they should be able to hear us very clearly. And then whenever they want to speak, they just put their volume back on, unmute, and then they can speak. But they should hear us very clearly.
Okay, all right. Because they're not hearing you.
I know, I was...
So, all right. So, guys, if you would try this, please go to our Facebook livestream and mute your microphones because our microphones all go into the Facebook stream. So then you should be able to hear us, and as long as you're just listening, just keep, just keep your device on mute. And then when you want to say something, then push your volume on and speak, okay? Let's try that.
Linda, I am logged in on Facebook and the sound is better, but the timing is not the same. And, you know, so it's awkward.
Okay. There's a two-second delay. Can we work with that or do I need to ask board members to come up here every single time they want to say something? Ms. Burke?
The microphone at the podium, does that work? Because that is on, I see. So that will still give us our spacing.
Okay. There's a two-second delay.
Thank you.
Will that still be the two-second delay?
Can we work with that or do I need to ask board members to come up here every single time they want to say something? Linda? Just so you know, it is more than a two-second delay.
It is more than two seconds. All right. Hang on.
That is on, I see.
So is this the only one that'll work? That will hear everybody in here? Okay. All right, well, then what we'll have to do... Okay. Then...
Lisha?
Yes? I don't even know who's speaking. Is this still Ms. Gibson? Is this the only one that'll work? All right, turn off your Facebook, please, because we are hearing it. So please mute your device. Please mute your device. Thank you. Okay, so this is what we will do. When anyone needs to speak beyond a vote, they will have to come up here to do so and I will have to move. For a vote, I can just tell you who said yes or no. The voting didn't work either.
I have one possible adjustment. If we would all just defer to Ms. Owen to characterize whatever it is we're saying, and you could just relay it.
No, they need to hear your talk.
All right.
Okay. All right, so now we will proceed to the vote of the approval of the agenda, but first we have to deal with Ms. Gibson's proposed agenda item. She would like to propose a separate agenda item to discuss the impact of this emergency on both the current fiscal year's budget and the next fiscal year's budget. All right, so Mr. Young has seconded your motion, Ms. Gibson.
Madam Chair, you already had a motion on the floor to adopt the agenda. She was just adding her piece to it. I thought you did, my apologies. So you need a motion.
So we have the motion, and that was Ms. Gibson's motion. And Mr. Young has seconded, so I think we vote on this. Okay. Motion. All right.
And so what you will be adding to the agenda is the announcement of the REB winners, an authorization to sign, and a budget update for 2019-20 and 2021-22?
We can't do it all in one thing. Okay. So the motion on the floor is to adopt the agenda with the three additions: announcing the REB winners, authorizing Ms. Hudasko to sign for Mr. Simmons in his absence, and to have a separate discussion of the budget for fiscal year 2020 and fiscal year 2021, the impact of the emergency. All right? Ms. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson? Ms. Gibson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Young? Dr. Sapini? Dr. Sapini, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, then you have to come up here.
Madam Chair, I would like to speak to the motion because this pandemic, this virus, coronavirus, this crisis that we are currently encountering, account, encountering. It is a changing target, so we may give, the superintendent may give an update regarding the budget today, but tomorrow, two days, three days from now, things can totally change because, and this is evolving. So I think we need a constant update, not just today, but ongoing. So in order that we can make an informed decision, I just think it's too early in the game to, you know, to have, to make a definitive decision when it's a moving target, it's fluid. And I think we have to be fair to our constituents as things are changing to be able to make those informed decisions.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Page. All right. First agenda item. 2.01, received for action, the middle school program of studies. This is the second read of that. I don't know that we need a motion. Do we need a motion, Ms. Wilson?
Yes, you do.
All right. Did somebody like to make a motion to approve the middle school program of studies?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Attorney Lilly just shared that this is actually, never mind. Okay, so the motion was made by Ms. Page and seconded by Mr. Young. Is there any discussion, Madam Chair?
Is there any discussion about this motion to approve the middle school program of studies?
I have a question. This is Kenya.
Yes?
Another, I'm sorry, this is probably agenda-related, but I'm wondering, in terms of the public comment, I believe that we extended the opportunity to read public comments in the meeting. Is that still planned to happen?
As of the time of the meeting, I had not received any public comments via email. Any that I received during or after the meeting, I will send to you all.
Okay. She did not receive any comments, they were supposed to go to Ms. Wilson. She did not receive any prior to the meeting. If there are any that received after that, they will be shared with all of us via email.
I'm looking at my email now. I do believe something came through. Hold on a second. So at 5:30, I was copied on the email from Meredith Thompson that was sent to the speakers@rvaschools.net email address.
I did not receive that because I was setting up in council chambers. I can go get it if the board would like me to, or I can email it after the meeting.
The speakers@rvaschools.net email was the email that was shared publicly for folks to submit their public comment on.
All right. Is that the one from Meredith Thompson? Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
All right, I will read it now. In response to the Facebook post on RPS page posted one hour ago at 4:00 p.m., two hours prior to the board meeting informing the public that in adherence to the governor's executive orders regarding social distancing and crowd gatherings of no more than 10, no in-person public comment will be available. However, comments may be submitted to speakers@rvaschools.net until 6:00 p.m. In an effort to adhere to good governance and transparency, I hope that you will implement one of the many available web-based programs to allow for live public comments at the next board meeting and give the public ample notice to maximize engagement. Thank you, Meredith Thompson. Okay? All right, so now, is there any discussion about the middle school program of studies?
I do have one question.
Yes?
My question is specific to the removal of middle school courses from a transcript. I want to know, I believe it states that it's optional, and it's my understanding that it's, that this is not an optional piece, but just wanted to hear from legal counsel on that. It doesn't say it's optional.
Ms. Lilly?
I did not hear a question, I'm sorry. This is Dr. Epp. I may be able to address.
So what's causing that feedback, Ali? Is that... Ms. Gibson? Can you turn off your, the speaker so you can hear Dr. Epp reply?
My speaker has been off.
Somebody, oh.
Okay.
Anyone in here have their... Okay, all right, Dr. Epp, can you try again?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. On page 23 of the program of studies, it states that students, middle school students taking high school courses for credit in middle school will have the option to request to remove, omit the course from their transcript. If that course is omitted, the student will retake the course in high school to earn credit towards graduation requirements if applicable. This request must be made at the end of eighth grade year. Once a student begins high school, the option to admit that course and credit will no longer be available. Students wishing to seek this option can do so through the school counseling office. And we will issue guidance and timelines as well as a form at the end of the school year. It is written in accordance with state policy that all middle school students do have this option. So the state code says that school districts must create a timeline and process for giving families the option to remove course, the course from the transcript. That is what we have written here.
This is Kenya, once again, so I'm wondering if it's possible to amend that language with a bit more detail in terms of the timing, so that it's clear to families what the deadline is. It says this request must be made at the end of the eighth grade year. Once the student begins that, begins high school, that option to admit will no longer be available. So if there is any other detail in terms of the process and the timeline, I think that would be important to include. I'm happy to amend with a bit more, however, this is not a procedural document. This is an overview. We have many things that have separate forms, procedures, and timelines, but I'm happy to add a bit more specifics upon approval of the, upon, contingent upon the approval. Yeah, I think that, you know, for parents, there's quite a lot of documentation, so to have bits and pieces on different pieces of, on documents, I think adds a bit more complication. I know as a parent, it'd be helpful to have everything all together.
Ms. Wilson, do we have a motion on the floor for this?
You do. The motion was made by Ms. Page and seconded by Mr. Young.
Okay. Is there any further discussion about the approval of the middle school program of studies? All right, then let's have the vote. Ms. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson? Ms. Gibson?
Yes, pending that approval.
Mr. Young? Dr. Sapini? Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Mrs. Page?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke? Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, so the motion passed. How many?
I'm sorry, 8-0.
Eight to zero. Okay. All right, then the next item on the agenda is to receive for action the personnel actions. These were posted to board docs. So I hope everyone has had a chance to look at them. Is there a motion to approve the personnel actions?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded by several people. I think Ms. Page was the first one to move, and I'm not sure who was the seconder.
Ms. Door seconded.
Okay. All right, so Ms. Page moved to approve the personnel actions and Ms. Door seconded that motion. Is there any discussion? Very well, let's have the vote. Ms. Door? Mr. Barlow? Mr. Barlow, do you approve? Ms. Gibson? Ms. Gibson, do you approve?
I think.
Mr. Young? Dr. Sapini? Dr. Sapini, do you approve? That was a no? No. Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Burke? Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-1.
So the motion passed 5 to 1.
And Madam Chair, if we could back up for just a minute, before we got to your action items, you did have the amendment where you added the announcement of the REB winners?
Yes, I'm sorry. Okay, so I'm moving backward down to the amendment in the agenda 1.03 to announce the REB winners. So, Mr. Kamras?
Good evening. I am delighted to report that the REB selection committee has chosen Cary Principal Michael Powell as this year's Richmond Public Schools REB Excellence in Leadership Award winner. And on behalf of RPS, we would like to extend our deep congratulations and gratitude to Mr. Powell for all the great work that he is doing and will do at Cary this year and beyond. Congratulations.
Okay, so moving on to 2.03, to authorize Ms. Hudesco to sign for Mr. Simmons while Mr. Simmons is excitedly on paternity leave. Is there a motion?
So.
Ms. Burke has moved.
Second.
Ms. Page has seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, moving on to the vote.
Ms. Dorr?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Ms. Gibson, do you approve?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Ah.
Dr. Sapini?
Dr. Sapini, do you approve?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Motion passes eight, zero.
Okay. Do you have a number for the amendment about the budget?
That you just voted on?
I just, so I don't know where to put it.
2.03? Or did I misunderstand your question?
Well, we just did item 2.03.
Right.
So, I misunderstood your question.
So, what number is our discussion of the two budgets?
Oh, I'm sorry.
4.02.
Okay, thank you. All right, then, moving on to 4.01, we will receive a COVID-19 update from Mr. Kamras.
Thank you, Ms. Owen, and good evening, everyone. Just wanted to provide a quick update in four areas: food, technology, academics, and budget, and of course, glad to take any questions that folks have and provide any answers that I have this evening, and anything that I don't know, would be glad to gather that information for you. First, on food, I'm very proud that Richmond Public Schools is, in many ways, leading the region on our food distribution efforts. We have now 55 locations across the city, 10 school-based sites, and 45 drop-off locations. We are delivering about 13,000 meals a day. I also want to note that our Office of Engagement is personally reaching out to families who are experiencing homelessness, and where necessary, doing individual delivery. I also want to note we have bilingual staff at our South Side centers and on the buses that are dropping food off through routes on the South Side, and we are working to gather and provide other supplies to our families, including feminine hygiene products, toiletries, diapers, wipes, and other cleaning products as necessary. On the technology front, so far, we have roughly 7,000 requests have come into our survey. We are continuing to communicate it as broadly as possible, and would encourage everyone listening to do the same. As a result of the board's approval of the initial $771,000 budget transfer, we were able to order 2,030 computers, and through commitments from philanthropy of approximately half a million, we'll be in a position to order roughly another 1,300 devices. We also have, as I shared previously, approximately 2,000 hotspots on hand, and per the budget transfer request I made last week, we'll use funds that were reallocated to purchase and activate these hotspots and get those out to our families as well. We believe we will be able to do our first computer distribution this week. We will start with seniors, then ninth through 11th graders, then middle schoolers, and then elementary students, but our goal is to get devices and access into every RPS student who needs them. On academics, we launched today RPS at Home, which is our prepackaged online lessons for our students. The goal with this was to make at-home learning much easier for both our students and our families, to take out a lot of the guesswork. Initial feedback has been very positive. There were a few technical glitches with access to some of the YouTube videos and some permissions on some of the other documents, but we are working through those, and welcome additional feedback to help us improve the platform. We launched today with pre-K through eight. We will have the high school modules later this week. They're a bit more complicated because of the nuances of the VDOE guidance for receiving credit through these modules. I also want to note that we have worked with our tutoring partners to make their services available to students through our website. Some provide live chat assistance, and some schedule tutoring sessions that can be accessed from our website, from the RPS at Home page. We also have a section for supporting our English learners and a section for supporting students with IEPs. I also want to note that physical packets that are a substitute for the online platform, not an exact replica, because you can't replace the online resources exactly with physical documents, but a approximation of the content will be made available starting next week, and that will last for the remainder of the school year, so approximately 10 weeks, which is the same for the modules on RPS at Home. They're essentially 10-week modules. I do want to, before I get to the budget, just thank Dr. Epp and her team for the extraordinary work that they have done to pull this together, including many of our teachers, principals, and other staff who have recorded videos. If you go on the site, you will see them, and I'll show you quickly a demo. I also want to thank Dr. Harris and Mr. Simmons for the incredible work that they have done on the food distribution, and Dr. Epp on the technology work. Thank Mr. Hughes for his incredible work with our principals, helping guide them and steer them at this time, and then certainly Ms. Hudesco for helping keep everything organized and streamlined and moving forward during this incredibly difficult time. On the budget, the short story is, as I shared previously, we have made two reallocations. The first was the 771,000 for the computers. The second was the one on the 300,000 order. I do not recall the exact number right now that I emailed the board about last week for the hotspots. Going forward, we will continue to try to identify places in our budget where there may be potential savings due to the change in our operating status, given the coronavirus, and so as we identify other places where we could potentially save money and potential expenses, of course, I will circle back with the board. As we think about FY '21, I was on a call with Dr. Lane and other Virginia superintendents that the governor joined last week, and he shared that the state is anticipating a minimum $1 billion, that's with a B, dollar revenue decrease from the estimate that the budget was based on. That's the budget that the Assembly passed right before the coronavirus took off. What that means is the state will obviously need to make adjustments down. The governor said he will make every effort to keep K through 12 education whole. I know it's very important to him and to the First Lady, but a billion dollars is a lot, so we don't quite yet know what the implication will be. The General Assembly is coming back in session soon to grapple with this, and so I think continued advocacy to keep K through 12 whole will be important. Similarly, on the city side, though I don't know any numbers, projected revenue is anticipated to be lower than was originally expected, and so I know in speaking with the mayor that he's going to do everything he can to keep RPS whole, but again, the city's expecting a significant reduction in its revenue. So, those are the two downward pressures. On the upward side is the federal stimulus package. We don't know exactly how much RPS will receive just yet, but in good news, the allocations are being driven by the percentage of students living in poverty. Unfortunately, because we have a very high percentage of such students, our allocation stands to be rather significant, and so hopefully that could make up for some of the shortfalls from the state and the city. I will note that the, my initial understanding of the federal stimulus is that there is broad authority to use that money in a number of different ways, so I'm grateful for that as it appears those funds will be available to plug whatever holes we see necessary. On top of which, as I shared before, if there are any savings that we can identify from this year, those potentially could be used not just to cover our emergent expenses, but potentially, though I can certainly not say for certain, to be held in reserve for next year as well. So, that is where the budget stands. Last, I just want to say thank you so much to our extraordinary teachers who are doing so many amazing and inspiring things each and every day. I have been literally brought to tears sometimes reading the shout-outs that I get every day. The love for our students and families, from our teachers, our principals, our custodians, our nutrition workers, the payroll team, everybody, is deeply, deeply inspiring, and I have never been prouder than today to be a part of the RPS family, and the hashtag #RPSdrawing is more than the hashtag. I believe it truly represents who we are as a family, as a community, and I believe that despite the very real challenges we face right now, we will come through this and come out even stronger. Thank you. Oh, my gosh, thank you. There is one bit of policy that I do, would like your approval of, and that is how to address grades for the third marking period and then final grades for the year. So, we have been discussing this with teachers, students, families, RPA President Harris, and we've conferred with our colleagues in the counties as well, and are proposing the following guidance for how to proceed. Am I doing this, or you're doing this? It's just one slide, so we just need to go down. So, the context here is that we closed school, the whole state did, about two-thirds of the way through the third marking period, and so we need to come up with a way of how to calculate grades for that third period, and then, knowing there won't be a fourth period, how do we calculate final grades? We have bifurcated this, elementary schools versus middle and high schools. On the elementary side, what we are proposing, and parenthetically, this is also what at least Henrico I know is doing, for students who were passing, elementary students who were passing their math class, their reading class, and so on, as of the closure, they would get an S for successful, not a grade, just S. And for those who were not passing at the time, they would get N for needs improvement. Again, it's not a grade, it's just a notation so that teachers would know how to support students going forward. We will not be calculating final grades for elementary students. There's no need to, and it would be very difficult to do so nonetheless, given the proposal. For middle and high school students, a little bit different, given that grades are more significant for GPA and other purposes. We had two goals when thinking about not just middle and high school, but also elementary, but it applies most importantly to middle and high school. One is to do no harm to our kids, this closure is not their fault. And the second is to try to make this as simple and as clear as possible, because it's a very confusing time for our students and our families. So, what we are proposing is that teachers enter final grades by May 8th, gives them about a month, to put anything they need to put into Aspen to finalize kids' grades, but anything that is missing, a missing assignment, we would ask teachers to code as E for exempt. And the reason is because there are many, many reasons that are out of kids' control right now for why they would not be able to turn in makeup work, from as mundane as a teacher not having facility themselves with electronic means, and so then needing paper, which would then counter all of the coronavirus guidance we've been giving in terms of passing documents, gathering people, and so many other complexities. There are things like transportation issues that kids would face, certainly the technology issues, that we're trying to solve them as fast as we can. In addition, we would ask that any assignment that was graded already as an F be entered as a 50%, not lower than 50%. There are cases where teachers would do a test, you get three out of 10 right, and they're entering 30% for the F. We are asking that all of those be entered at 50%, again, because students really aren't going to have the opportunity to make up that test in a meaningful way, and so as not to further depress grades to have those all at 50%. Then, we would calculate a third quarter grade based upon what the teachers enter, and then simply average the first marking period, the second marking period, and the third marking period, each at one-third, to give a final grade for the year. Glad to take any questions.
This is Kenya.
Okay.
Hello.
Hello, I'm sorry, we had to exchange our seats. So, I have Ms. Gibson, then Mr. Young, then Ms. Dorr.
Yes.
Would it be more efficient if we had to do this in years' time, and then call again? We're not having to.
No. Okay, so Ms. Gibson?
Okay, I'm going to begin. I have some questions, not related to the grading, but to some of the other updates that Mr. Kamras mentioned, so I'll ask these, and then I'll let others go, and then ask questions regarding the grading. So, I wanted to find out about the RPS home. The tutors are, I believe, through PCG, and I wanted to know if there is a cost implication to that, and kind of what the, you know, kind of the rationale in working with the consultant tutors for that. And then the other question is, in regards to the technology survey, I didn't see a question specific to students with an IEP. I want to find out how the district is going to ensure that those students with an IEP will be prioritized. It's my understanding that, you know, ensuring that those students have access to that technology now that we have the online program is mandated by federal law.
All right, we have two questions, Mr. Kamras or somebody else?
So, everyone? Do you want to go?
Okay. All right. Ms., so then it was Ms. Dorr, and then Mr. Young, did you have a question or just? Okay. So, Ms. Dorr?
I have, oh.
No, you can tell me, and then I'll...
I'll leave. Great job on the material. Thank you.
Ms. Dorr has said, "Great job." Ms. Dorr has said, "Great job on the material."
I'll do feedback. Have a question on computer distribution.
Question on computer distribution.
Have a question on counting meal distribution for USDA reimbursement.
On counting meals for USDA reimbursement.
And have a question on how online classes are treated.
And a question on how online classes are going to be treated. Let me finish writing, Mr. Young. Okay, all right, Mr. Young.
Sorry, one more.
Oh, okay, Ms. Dorr, one more.
Confirmation that curriculum is suggested and not mandatory.
All right, Mr. Young?
My question pertains to something that specifically, perhaps, that we might be able to see with the senior, but personnel for next year, specifically, like a year of course, we may have a lot of those will depart on our teacher. How more do you want to proceed relative to hiring for next year?
Okay, Mr. Young's question was, how are we going to proceed with, I guess, assessing how many teachers are leaving, and then hiring new teachers for next year? All right, are there, and Ms., okay, Ms. Page?
Yes, I just wanted to say.
Great job. I need to turn this off, or keep it on?
I just want to also commend the administration, Dr. Harris, family and community engagement with the meal distribution, especially in the South Side, because I know we have made some adjustments, some accommodations, really to get into our neighborhood, getting help the community, having to serve, and I just want to say kudos, great job, for anyone that has helped out, I've heard nothing but positive feedback. So I just really want to commend the administration. And my question is, with the survey, how are we going to attract families that do not have access to internet or any survey or not?
Okay, so Ms. Page first wanted to commend the administration, especially Dr. Harris and her team, especially in South Side, for making adjustments to be sure that the food and packet distribution was accessible to more. And then her question was, how families could complete the computer survey if they didn't already have access to a computer? Are there any other questions at this time for Mr. Camaras? Okay, so if you'll address those, then we'll go back to the grading. Can I ask you first, are we going to adopt this grading thing tonight? Okay.
Thank you so much for the questions, and thank you also for the words of support. We greatly appreciate them. Certainly, I know the team is energized by those words of support. Ms. Gibson asked about the cost implication of the tutors. If Dr. App is on, which I believe she is, I'd ask her to speak to that.
Yes, so both our providers, PCG and Acxiom, are the same providers we've used throughout the school year. They hire our tutors and work with us to train them around the content and quality. This is strengthened the quality of our in-person tutoring. And so when this crisis began, both organizations being really mission-aligned partners had reached out to help us solve how they could continue to provide the tutoring they were providing at school virtually. So these are dollars that have already been allocated. And of course, some of the money will depend on usage, some of the costs will depend on usage, and we expect any over, you know, certainly be covered through our stimulus package. But these are tutoring partners that have existed for quite some time.
And then, the next question was on students with IEPs being prioritized for computers. I believe I'm correct in saying Dr. App can chime in here, but our first tier of distribution includes not just seniors, but also students with IEPs. I neglected to share that. But Dr. App, can you say anything more on that?
That's correct. And while there's not, we certainly would not, did not want to ask a question about having an IEP on a survey for further reasons. We know the students who have IEPs, and we are cross-referencing the list of students who've requested a device with our students with IEPs. There's more addition, there's additional information on I support to students with IEPs on our RPS at-home page, but those students will be receiving services and support during this time.
And Dr. App, the next question was.
Can we keep going? Online classes?
Oh, no, the next question was about computer distribution from Ms. Dorr. I'm assuming it was how, when, and so on. She's nodding her head yes, so can you say a word about that as well?
Sure. We are awaiting confirmation from our partners at TIG, Technology Integration Group. They have been working to configure our existing devices for at-home use, to make sure that they are able, students are able to access the materials. So we're awaiting an official date, but hope to begin distribution late this week. We imagine starting small with them in the prioritized order, and then ramping up as they're able, as the devices come in and get configured. Shipping times for the new devices obviously vary, so we're expected, we'll be, we imagine distributing devices over the next two to three weeks, maybe three weeks, depending on shipping time and configuration time from TIG. But they are working very urgently, they share our urgency to get these devices ready and out.
Thank you. And the next question is, can you speak to how the RPS at-home lessons will be treated in terms of grades? And as a related matter, whether they are mandatory or not?
Sure. So RPS at-home for pre-K through 8, these are suggested and encouraged learning sequences and resources. We've heard from families that they are eager to have more guidance and more resources, particularly given the closure for the remainder of the school year. We believe that these are high-quality and aligned to the content that students would have otherwise been receiving during this time of the school year. So they are suggested and encouraged, but not mandatory. If students have been doing things that have been working with them in other ways, or with their teachers one-on-one, or virtually, you know, we encourage families to make that choice. For high school courses.
Before you go on to high school, I'm sorry, Tracy, I want to clarify that they are not required, as you said. And even if they are done, they are not graded. So even if they are done, there will be no grades. Okay, now go on to high school and middle school.
So, well, pre-K, 8, what I just shared is true for middle school as well, with the exception of students who are taking high school credit-bearing courses. High school guidance, I would direct folks to the FAQ online at the RPS at-home page under high school, as it depends on your grade level and graduation status. But in a nutshell, in order to earn your full course credit, consistent with state recommendations and guidelines, students will need to complete a modified, a short module for the remainder of the spring that covers the content that would have been taught during this time, to earn their course credit. This is separate from a grade, this work will not be graded, but completion is required to receive the course credit, and if applicable, students are eligible to also receive a verified credit in accordance with the state waivers that have been issued.
And can you just clarify the nuance for seniors as distinct from other high school students?
Sure. So for seniors in particular, due to the state waivers, if you were a senior as of, that was, as of March 13th, was considered on track to graduate, such that assuming you passed your courses, you would be graduating, you are largely done with your coursework, and there's no remaining coursework to do, unless you are, unless you have an AP course, we still want you to take the AP exam, so that you can get the college credit for that, which is offered virtually. If you're a senior that was otherwise on track but was failing a course at the end of the first semester, you would need to complete a module to earn that course credit for the course that you were failing. And then seniors who otherwise would have been attending summer school, or coming back for a fifth year, have the opportunity to take advantage of the state waivers by completing additional coursework through our, what we're calling senior sessions, that will kick off in late April. It goes from April through June, I'm sorry, April through July, so that students who would have otherwise needed to take coursework during the summer to graduate will still have the opportunity to do that. So if seniors take advantage of all the different opportunities we're giving them, the majority of our seniors should be able to graduate on time, including, you know, by the end of this calendar year, as well as, I'm sorry, the school year, as well as the summer.
And.
Again, that's a bit more complex, so I would encourage those to refer to the FAQs and make sure that students, our counselors, high school counselors, are reaching out this week to seniors, to ensure seniors understand which category they are in, and what work, if any, remains to be done to confer their graduation status. We are often sending letters home this week. And so if the parents of seniors are not sure what to do, they can, they should reach out to their principal or school counselor. For grades nine through 11, again, they should read the FAQs online, and later this week, the instructions for how to access the spring modules to earn course credit will be available.
Thank you so much, Dr. App. Dr. Harris, if you are on, can you say a word about how we're counting the meal distributions for USDA reimbursement?
Similar to what we did during the school year, we do a daily count of all meals that were distributed from our 10 regional sites. We also have an accurate count of all bags that were delivered via our mobile meal on the go. And at the end of each day, our food service managers put those in a report that goes to the state daily. Also, our strategy has been approved, and we have to have a waiver to make sure we could do the mobile meal distribution. So we are in compliance with that, and then do a daily count.
And while I have you, there was a question about families who do not have internet access, how we're reaching out to them in terms of signing up for the computers?
So we've done a multitude of things. One, our principals have been extremely supportive in having staff members who graciously called families in our different communities to, and walked through the surveys. And we told our teachers, counselors, social workers, they were able to input information for families, showing a variety of schools. We had RPS staff who helped families. We also made, through our office, individual phone calls to some of our most vulnerable families, families that were in our shelters, or whom they have been doubled up. So we did individual outreach to those families. And then we also tied it into our mobile meal distribution. So all of our volunteers were prompted to ask questions during distribution, to see if people needed support. And if they didn't have internet access, we also gave a phone number that people could call, both in English and Spanish, to support them with the survey.
Thank you, Dr. App. And the last question that I had from the initial batch was, in terms of how are we going to proceed for hiring for next year? I can take that one. In short, we have deemed the talent office essential. They are continuing to work, we are continuing to take applications, we will be extending offers. It is paramount importance that we are prepared for whenever we do, in fact, come back. So I do want the world to know, and we will be doing more to advertise this. We are open for business in terms of hiring, and will, of course, do everything we can to get some great candidates for next year as well.
Ms. Page?
Yes, my question is, some of her doctor, in her, the information, chairman of her information, transparency, information provided, FAQs, for information discussed, as well as Dr. Harris.
The question for folks on the phone from Ms. Page was, could some of the information that was shared from Dr. App and Dr. Harris be made available? Actually, I believe it is available. There's an FAQ on all the academic stuff on the RPS at-home site, and all of the information that Dr. Harris has shared, I believe, is on our website, but I'll double-check and make sure that we get any pieces that we're missing set up there as well. Yes.
All right, then I'm going to go back to Ms. Gibson. I guess, moving on to the recommendations about grading. Ms. Gibson, you have questions about that?
Yes, so my question about grading is to understand by comparison, how the other districts are handling that. In looking at the document, and I'm sorry, I'm pulling it up again right now as we're speaking, the recommendation doesn't note, you know, details in terms of what will mark as a passing grade, and what will, you know, at the elementary level. So I'm just wondering how the approach is working in context of how some of the other districts are doing it.
All right, does anybody else have a question about this in particular, so that Dr., Mr. Camaras and his team can address all of the questions? Anyone? All right, Mr. Camaras?
Jason, would you like to address this question?
I'm sorry, Harry, what was that?
I said, would you like you to address this question?
Sure, go ahead.
So, Ms. Gibson, at the elementary level, our policy is the exact same policy they've adopted in Henrico County. At the elementary level, a passing grade would be any grade above a 61. A failing grade would be any grade 60 or below for any work that was done up until March 13. In terms of our middle school and high school grading recommendations, the biggest difference between us and Henrico County is that in Henrico County, it's allowing their students to do a makeup package to earn a higher grade.
Yes, and can you elaborate on that, Harry, as to why we are going in a different direction on that?
Yes, as we've stated before, we're going in a different direction, because we're considering all the inequities that's created from. considering all the inequities that's created from both a teacher's standpoint as well as a student's standpoint in terms of trying to complete makeup work. We still have students who don't have computers, don't have internet access, um, are now primary caregivers or of their, of their siblings or with relatives, so it's not just as easy as saying, oh, kids can make up work. Again, there would be then questions around how would work be turned in? Everything we know about the coronavirus is that the virus can be spread off surfaces, off papers, so we're very hesitant to have students turn in work packets and potentially put our teachers out with. At the same time, it is our understanding that some of our teachers don't have internet access, um, and are dealing with real life issues themselves, so we just felt that having students have the ability to make up work with cost inequities in both our teaching corps as well as with our students, and that it would advantage those who have and disadvantage those who are suffering right now.
If I could just, um, thank you, Harry. I, I want to maybe say this a little bit differently. Um, it's not that we're not allowing kids to do makeup work, it's that we're not requiring it. Instead, we're just excusing those assignments that were missed, um, out of, um, in essence, grace for our students, knowing that many are not in a position of being able to do so right now. So, this was a, um, higher level, uh, sort of system-wide decision to excuse any of those missing assignments, um, so that they don't have to be made up, given all of their inequities that kids would face. I will also note that Henrico has a learning management system, um, that allows for the, um, dissemination and return of assignments completely online. We do not yet have such a system, and so there are gross inequities between teacher to teacher, school to school, student to student that make us, I think, unique, and so we did not want to place the burden on our students, or frankly, our teachers, and instead chose to give a blanket exemption to any missed assignment. Um, we know that, uh, certainly that advantages, uh, students who did not do, uh, assignments, um, but given where we are right now, again, our first principle was do no harm, and so that was the rationale for that decision.
So, um, can you speak to what the timeframe will be for the grading to be, uh, determined? And then, I'm also wondering, so, um, the note says that we're two-thirds away through the third marking period, so when does the third marking period officially end?
I'd ask Harry to speak to the date, um, as for when we are asking for all final information grades to be entered, uh, May 8th, so that would give teachers a month, um, to get everything set in Aspen, uh, so that we could finalize grades.
I'm sorry, Ms. Gibson, I'm not in front of my computer, but we worked six weeks into a non-week quarter, so we have three weeks left.
So, we should be right about, the end of the third quarter is about now or this week. Mr. Young has a question.
I think this, I think this makes sense, uh, part of, part of our, uh, approach, uh, I think, I guess so. And I think with regard, there must have been some conversation relative to soliciting of each teacher, correct their description, their perspective, and the student should advance, move on, and, again, I recognize the value of it, but there are also risks of state and the obvious, there are a lot of students that will advance the next course, uh, the next grade, that, uh, the circumstances beyond any of our control, granted, uh, they shouldn't, and with this, they're damaged next year, if we're perfectly able to do things simultaneously. I guess my question regarding, uh, what does that conversation look like, the balance of that concern, that very big concern for a lot of students that will move to the next course, but will not pay the proper teacher's part of the property, something that's, uh, do, do anything with the person, do you personally?
If I can paraphrase your question and, and tell me if I have it, uh, for those on the phone, in essence, um, while you feel the policy generally makes sense, your question was around, um, was there discussion of creating a space for individual teachers to weigh in on whether a student really is ready to move forward, given their knowledge of the student and, uh, the student's performance, knowing that our policy will, um, advantage students in a way that might move them forward when they are not fully prepared to do so? Would that be accurate? Okay. Um, he's nodding yes for those on the phone. Um, well, a couple of things, um, I, I concede, this is a broad strokes policy, um, we labored over the various permutations of it rather significantly, um, and got lots of different folks' feedback to, to think through it. Um, I think the reality is any, any policy of this type that rests on sort of individual teacher discretion, bless you, Ms. Door. At this time, given the unique circumstances of, um, the inability to sometimes communicate, the stresses many of our teachers have, the fact that some of them are ill themselves, um, would make that not tenable on a large scale. That being said, I do want to note that this applies to grades, but for a student at the high school level to get credit, they still are going to need to complete the online module. It won't be graded, but it will require completion, and through the Edge Annuity platform that we're using for the high school modules, we can track completion. Um, that is by no means a, a perfect response, but it is something, and then, um, as you yourself have noted in, in some of your, um, ideas for the board to consider, we're going to have to likely think differently about next year, either starting earlier, going longer, increasing the length of the day to make sure that, um, any gaps don't persist. And I think we can all agree, there are going to be gaps. No online learning platform, whether mandatory or not, is going to replace a highly skilled teacher, period, full stop. And so, we're going to have to make some tough choices about how we fill those gaps in next year.
Okay, we have shuffled back. Are there any further questions about any of this update? Then we will need a motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
If I may read, the motion would be to suspend policy five dash six point two and any policy inconsistent- Can someone turn their mic off, please? Thank you. And any policy inconsistent with the presented plan and adopt the proposed COVID-19 grading policy.
Were you all able to hear, Ms. Wilson?
No, I wasn't.
Okay. Do you have that in writing, Ms. Wilson? Okay, the motion would need to be to suspend policy five dash six point two and any policy inconsistent with the presented plan and adopt the provo- proposed COVID-19 grading policy. Do I have a motion to that effect? Ms. Page has moved the motion. Ms. Burke has seconded the motion. Is there any further discussion? Then let's have the vote.
Mrs. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Mrs. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Mr. Young abstains. Ms. Door said yes.
Dr. Sapini?
Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Dr. Sapini, are you back with us?
Dr. Sapini, are you there?
Motion passes six one, six oh, I'm sorry.
So, the motion passed six to zero. So, now, we go to four point oh two. Any further discussion on fiscal year 20 or fiscal year 21 budget? Mr. Young? Anyone else?
I'll have a question.
All right, Ms. Gibson and Ms. Door. All right, we'll start with Mr. Young.
Just, you know, just references for, 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 yeah, for, for, so, expenditures of current fiscal year, so, we have an idea of what that's looking, looking like, numbers of dollars that we did spend, but was deployed, won't, and conversely, uh, what, uh, kind of expenditures, um, that we weren't planning for, that we're not, uh, uh-
All right. Mr. Young has asked that if we have an idea about dollars that would have been spent that we will not need to spend, and conversely, are there areas where we are exceeding our budgeted requirements? Okay, that's Mr. Young's question. Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, yes, I piggybacking on Mr. Young, I, I think it's critical that we get a, a document that, that outlines all of that detail. Um, in the budget transfer request, uh, it appears that the, uh, transfer items was specifically from the strategic plan, and I think that, um, you know, there, there surely is, is, is funding that is coming from other sources as it pertains to, um, the shortened school year. Likewise, likewise, um, you know, there might be other line items too that have gone over. I think that's critical to, to have an understanding of. I want to, um, know, it's kind of going back to the, the PRC or PCG tutors, I'm wondering, um, you know, if we explored having, uh, internal folks, uh, complete that work, and if that had been done, would that have allowed us a cost savings on the PCG tutor contract? Um, and, uh, lastly, I'd like to get a, a bit more detail, uh, as Mr. Cameras had mentioned that I, um, I did not pick up, but more specific to the timeframe, I mean, there has to be some line in the sand in terms of when we will get more detail, in terms of where we go next, both in terms of state funding and in, uh, city funding, so, you know, what is the timeframe on, on that information? And, um, likewise, I think that the administration should begin to look at recommendations on revision to the, uh, 2020, 2020, 2021 school year budget based on, um, you know, based on where we're at right now. So, what are the initiatives that, um, you know, we may look at putting on pause, given, um, given our current circumstances? Um, you know, what are the recommendations in terms of, uh, possible next steps? Um, and then likewise, I know, I'm thankful to hear that, uh, we are moving forward with hiring decisions that are critical, but I wonder, you know, are there other, uh, positions that perhaps we should hold on hiring right now, uh, due to the uncertainty of the budget for next year?
Um, Ms. Door?
Uh, I, I largely agree with what Michael has said. I don't think it's my, you know, fair to have that discussion, but I would also make a question on, you were saying about this, echoing, uh, off the idea of pausing the contracts, ending contracts, hires, and there are, we, we, uh, we-
Okay, Ms. Door was, um, agreeing that we didn't need to have an in-depth discussion tonight, but that going forward, we will need to take a look at maybe pausing some contracts and just, you know, doing some things to, um, to see where we might save some dollars going forward. Is that accurate, Ms. Door? Okay. All right, anything else? All right.
Also, just to-
Ms. Page, I'm sorry. Yeah.
As to how, regarding the budget, um, because it is fluid, it's one, um, but a long-term impact, as some of the questions have, you know, have, um, asked and asked questions.
Okay.
But, uh, but also, um, so we need to comment, the people, the public, uh, that they will, they can't hear us, so, so-
Now, it is.
Maybe it's a line for the Facebook.
Okay, so, that's probably why. Okay, so, when people who are in the room are speaking, you need to turn on your microphones or, uh, Facebook won't pick it up.
And my last question, are we able to provide the public feedback or share the comments from the meeting?
The public information comments that were emailed in?
Yes.
Madam Chair, if you'd like, I can, um, scan those and make an item on the agenda as a public information item and post those comments there if you all would like.
Okay, if there are any additional, uh, because I did read the one that had come in earlier, but if there are other comments that come in during the meeting, you're saying?
Right.
Okay, that, um, the clerk then will, um, disseminate those.
Okay, thank you.
I will scan and post them to Board Docs.
She will scan and post them to Board Docs.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, all right, Mr. Cameras, are there any other questions from people on the phone? All right, we're doing the shuffle.
Thank you, everyone, for all of those questions, uh, beginning with Mr. Young. Wanted to get a sense of both anticipated potential savings due to the closure as well as anticipated potential new expenditures, uh, due to the closing. I do not have that this evening, it is something that we are working through. We, um, you know, we started looking for savings for things, uh, that were new programs or that we wouldn't be able to move forward with, but we, the second phase of that work is looking at things like, um, gas for our fleet and energy for our buildings and, and so on and so forth. So, um, that is something we will, uh, begin doing over the next couple of weeks and, and glad to report that back to the board, uh, as soon as that is available. Uh, I think Ms. Gibson was asking a similar question about where we're, uh, going over. Uh, there was another question about the PCG tutors and if money could have been saved, uh, by not using them, but, but going internal. Um, I would ask Dr. Epp to speak, uh, to that, as she knows that contract, uh, better than I do.
Um, so, again, I would say these are dollars that, these are tutors and, uh, an existing partner that has already been in place, we're, um, simply adjusting to change the delivery mechanism to provide, and adjust to provide the need now. So, um, it would, to us, does not make sense to change our entire tutoring strategy. That said, um, PCG and Acxiom and, and the like have, um, they're also offering the infrastructure to allow for the range of options, including the call-in lines- to allow for the range of options, including the call-in lines that they can staff, the online chat that they can staff, as well as the virtual tutoring. And given the myriad logistics and, you know, complexities that we're handling right now, plus how much our individual teachers are doing on their own, we just believe that there's no way to do this without our partners. And so that was just, it's an obvious choice for us. Once the dollars come in, we can certainly evaluate it. But again, I want to emphasize, these are dollars that were allocated for tutoring purposes and those will continue to be utilized for such.
Thank you, Dr. Epp. Ms. Gibson also asked about the timeline on when we'll know more about city and state funding. I don't have an exact date, but I do anticipate that within the next two weeks, we should have more clarity on that as well as the federal stimulus package. My most recent call with Dr. Lane and my colleagues, he indicated that he felt that was a reasonable timeline by which we would have clarity on the exact amount coming to each division. So I'm hopeful that by, I'd say, late April, we should have much more clarity about our budget picture. Ms. Gibson also asked, you know, does it make sense, and we should likely be looking at contracts to be frozen or canceled, potentially hiring freezes in certain areas. We agree, we have actually already begun the process of reviewing contracts that can be modified or canceled in light of our closure. We do not want to issue a hiring freeze just yet, but we will continue to look at our needs. And if there are some areas where it does make sense to hold back, we will certainly do so. I also just want to note, not only is it difficult to make recommendations regarding the budget without those data points from the federal government, state and the city, it's also difficult not knowing exactly when the virus will peak in Virginia. As I shared over email today, if it peaks, say, by the end of April and therefore by June, things are in a state of approaching normalcy, then we have a lot of options with the summer and that has implications for our budget. If the peak isn't until May or even June, the likelihood that we would have a normal summer is very low and that has implications for our budget. So it's both getting those data points and getting a better sense of the trajectory of the virus, those two things will enable us to begin to make some thoughtful recommendations for us to discuss at the board level. Ms. Dorr also talked about pausing contracts and pausing hires, I think I addressed that. And Ms. Page mentioned sort of the long-term impact on the budget. Yep, I think those are things we're going to have to look at as we get more data and as we know the trajectory of the virus. But again, as we dig into things, get a better sense of potential overages and potential savings, contracts to be canceled and whatnot, I'll do a report back to the board to make sure that you are fully informed. Thank you. Oh, Ms. Page has one more question?
You said, you said something that raised a red flag. We talked about some board members mentioned a hiring freeze because, you know, we're going to encounter dealing with the summer slide and whatever this slide may, that we want to call it, there may be data points that we need more staff to support our students to make sure that, you know, because of the gap, you know, there will be possibly more support needed. So I think we need to pause when we talk about a hiring freeze because there be, there may be more needs for our students so that they can be successful and to close that achievement gap.
To paraphrase Ms. Page's question, she said that the mention of a potential hiring freeze raised a red flag because we might actually need more staff, more support for our young people, given all the missed time that they're having at school. I agree, I want to be clear, we are not, I want to be very clear, we are not under a hiring freeze. It was only raised as a potential, if necessary, down the road as a cost savings measure and only for particular job categories, but we are not there now, nor do I necessarily anticipate we'll be there. I agree with Ms. Page, it is likely we may need more staff and more support for our young people, so I am likewise hesitant to go down that path and would like to try to identify other means of making up any shortfall that we have. Ms. Dorr?
Mr. Young?
Oh.
Ms. Dorr?
Mr. Young?
On the subject of planning for next year, which, next academic year, which granted, and/or fiscal year, which granted is, you referenced, very difficult, to say the least. Do you have a sense for when we could start at least, and that, and part of the objective for what I sent to you, to my colleagues and to you, do you have a sense for when we could start developing different options and assigning some numbers to them? I mean, you referenced a couple a moment ago, there are probably scores of different scheduling options. When we can start a grant, given the circumstance with so many staff are not available, when we can start assigning some numbers so we can actually make some kind of educated or informed decision about how to do next year?
Mr. Young asked, acknowledging all the complexities and ambiguity that we have right now, sort of, when would we be able to begin to assign some budget numbers to some of the different scenarios for the summer and next school year? Would that be accurate? I think May 1 is the date when we're going to be in a position to start doing that. I think by that point, we'll have the financial data points, we'll know more about the trajectory of the virus, and then we can begin to model what those things look like.
Dorr?
Mr. Cameras, I, when I mentioned contracts, I agree, I'm talking not about teachers or your students, but I am talking about things like dreams for RPS, we might not be able to take that on this summer, so we might need to defer that higher for a couple of months.
Yeah. Yep. Oh, Ms. Dorr said that she was talking not about freezing teachers or things of that nature, but about, for example, something in dreams for RPS that maybe we were going to do next year, but perhaps are not able to do now during the, because of the closure and so we could defer that cost down the road another year. So yes, those are things we are taking a look at.
Burke?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm stepping back for one moment. First of all, again, thank you so very much. I am very, very, very pleased in the expedient manner of which Richmond Public Schools got out into the communities to have 55 sites and knowing that many of our food sites are deserts, that's meant so much to so many. But when we speak about, I'm glad that Ms. Dorr clarified, this isn't the time to talk about a job freeze. And we haven't addressed the mental health piece because many of our children and our families are homeless now. Dr. Harris has done an awesome, awesome job with that. So, and our volunteers have been phenomenal. Our principals and teachers have gone beyond that and then some, I see them, I see them out there. We have one principal in the East End, she's been in the community every day, I need to send her a shout out, every day passing our food and all the rest, clothing and all the rest. What my concern is, as we move forward, let's be mindful that we don't know who and whose family may have the virus, what teachers or faculty and staff persons. So at this time, I agree with what Mrs. Page stated in regards to be mindful of what we're putting out in terms of the budgeting piece, because right now, we don't know. We may end up with three times the amount, we may end up much less. But it's, I know we have to have a plan, but I do, I don't want anyone to think, any child will think, oh, my teacher isn't coming back next year because they don't have enough money. Or any teacher or faculty or crew chief or whomever, I just don't want that kind of energy to get out into the neighborhoods and into the community or in the media that we're considering that, because right now, we're about lifting up and supporting. And kudos to you, Mr. Cameras, outstanding. This has been really, really, really great. I see it. The children love seeing their teachers and the bus drivers and the person distributing the foods, the volunteers have been all phenomenal, phenomenal. I must also thank Ms. Udasco for taking care of some financial things in regards to people getting paid. So you have not because you ask not, so I ask at this point that we defer that conversation moving forward until we get, as you stated, May 1, probably? Thank you.
Ms. Burke cautioned us to be careful about even putting out into the community the notion of a freeze, given the anxiety that would cause students, staff, families. I certainly agree. She also recognized Dr. Harris and Ms. Udasco for the work that they have done as well as principals, teachers, custodians, so many other people in the East End and beyond. So thank you.
All right, we have completed my shuffle. Getting the steps in. Okay. And I believe barring somebody coming up with something else, we have reached the end of our agenda and I would like to adjourn this meeting. Going once, going twice, we adjourn. Thank you all for calling in and being part of our discussion.